We'll call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January tenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And this is the Stoughton City Council. And the first item of business would be the roll call.
Okay, Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Venegas. Helski. Here. Caravelo.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
We have eleven Alders present and Venegas is absent and excused.
All right, thank you. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Nobody has signed up for public comment. Communications and presentations, are there any communications from Alders this evening? President Hirsch. Oh, what? She can, yeah.
I don't want to say anything.
All right. Any communications from Alders? And there was a request, Candy, for you to give an update on the upcoming elections.
Right, thanks. Districts one and four do not have candidates for the spring election at this time. So the process that we can follow is if anyone is interested in running as a registered write-in candidate, they should file the CF1 form, which is the campaign finance registration that everyone usually files with their packet. If they could just register or send that in to me, and the sooner the better, because if they plan to collect or spend any money on their write-in campaign, that should be filed with me before they do that. So that's all that's required if they want to run as a write-in candidate at this time. So spread the word if anybody is out there that wants to do this.
And Candy, there is a deadline on that form, isn't there?
No, not as a write-in. Just so I have it, the Friday before the election and before the campaign.
Okay.
And Alder Person Legaki?
Yeah, just looking for a status report on the plan for ARPA funds.
Okay, I'll let President Hirsch go first, and then she wanted to comment on the election, and then she can give the update on the ARPA.
Thanks.
Not to put you on the spot or anything.
It's okay. First, I want to encourage anybody that's interested in running in districts one and districts four for city council to please do so and, you know, just call Candy to, you know, understand which form that you need to actually submit as a write-in candidate. And if, you know, anybody that's out there that's considering it and would like to figure out what the time commitment is, or talk to council members that are currently on council to understand what it's all about, please reach out to us. I'm available, and I know a number of our council members, everybody shaking their heads, would be happy to talk to you. It's really important that we have, you know, representations of each of the districts and make sure that your voices are heard on city council through representation, but also if you want to run, that would be fantastic. We're always looking for new people, new ideas, so, and it's not as scary as it seems. So please consider running. Gene, with respect to ARPA funds, now that the holidays are over, Lisa and I and the mayor and Dave will be getting together to come up with a plan. When we'll meet and when we're going to decide on that. Dave's been awfully busy with the whole budget series and then working with AJ and the mayor and all the department heads on getting the employees. You know, it's not called right sizing, but matching to make them market. Is it called market rate? And so, you know, we didn't want to, like, take Dave's time away from that to work on ARPA funds, but as soon as that's kind of hopefully going to be wrapping up soon, so we can start looking at that again. So.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other communications from Alders? Hearing none, we'll move into our agenda. The consent agenda is in the packet. It looks like there's a few items on there. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll move. A motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, the first resolution is R three of two thousand and twenty-three, and that one would be coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, as you said, R three, two thousand and twenty-three, and this is approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional land division for properties located at seventeen eighty-one Oakview Drive and twenty-seven forty-five Yehara Road, Town of Pleasant Springs, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second. Second by Jensen, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is pretty straightforward. This would take land from twenty-seven forty-five Yehara Road and transfer it to seventeen eighty-one Oakview Drive, kind of basically just reconfiguring what's there for, I believe, the purposes of folks. At seventeen eighty-one Oakview Drive needed more space so they could build a storage shed or a structure similar to that, and that's all this is. And it's before us because of the ETJ factor.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. Next resolution also comes, or this one comes from the Park and Recreation Committee, and this is R four of two thousand and twenty-three, and this would be Alder Person Tokowski.
Yes, this is R oh-four, two thousand and twenty-three, of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's a resolution to adopt the park master plans for Outlets Three and Outlet Six of the Fifty-One West Development, and I move to approve.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. I believe we have a guest, is that true, Joyce?
I am not sure. I think Dan Glenn is here. I saw his name briefly, anyway. I did want to say that if you haven't had a chance to read this in its entirety, it's a fantastic document. It goes into all the details of the issues that the committee discussed, and there's a wonderful thorough report on the surveys that were done. So it shows the tremendous work that went into these. So if Dan is here, or if there is a guest.
Yeah, I'll introduce Dan Schmidt, but just to get a little background on the development. So it's unique, as the development is split by Highway fifty-one. So typically you'd have one larger park, but in this instance, we have two smaller neighborhood parks, so they can meet the needs of the neighbors on both sides of the development. So it was a long process, you know, we hired NSA and Dan Schmidt worked on it, and NSA is familiar with our park system, as we did. The master plans for Mad Park, Racetrack Park, and now this development with the two parks here. And they also did our ADA transition plan a few years ago. So they're pretty familiar with our park system, and what they do, they do a really good job with soliciting public input and using the input to develop the master plans. So I'll turn it over to Dan here, who worked on it, and he has a presentation.
All right, is he going to drive the screen then?
Yeah, if you make him the presenter, you can drive the screen.
All right, let me.
I'll switch tonight. Give me a quick.
All right.
Sorry, let's get loaded up on my other machine here so I can run through that better.
So, Dan, we do, since we met, I don't know, we do have action items on tonight to name the parks, too, so that'll be later on, but Outlet Six is the one on the east side, and the proposed name for that is Edgelson Woods Park. So we can maybe, just for the sake of discussion, if that's what you want to refer to it as, even though it's not official. And then on the west side, you'll see that the recommendation is to name that one the T-Nossick Park.
That was KPAW.
Oh, I'm sorry. The west side one was already named Greg Standard Park. Sorry about that. So that one was previously named, and we're in the process of having conversations with the family exactly if we're going to name it Greg Standard Park or Memorial Park and those types of things. So we're letting them have an internal conversation, and we expect to hear from them at some point to really finalize the exact wordage of the name of that park. So, yeah, let me know when you're ready, Dan. Otherwise, if it's, I don't know, was the presentation what was in the packet?
Yeah, it is, yep.
I can certainly walk through that if you wanted to do it that way, too.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
All right, we'll do that. Let me pull it up here.
Interested everybody's time.
Just tell me if this is where you want to start.
Yeah, so thanks, everyone. We'll make this fairly quick, but just a background on what we've been doing. Working with staff, committee, public input over the last several months on developing a master plan. As we look through these, these are high-level documents, creating a framework for development of these parks. Ideally, these parks will be developed rather quickly, particularly Outlet Six of the development on the east side of fifty-one, as there is already housing and infrastructure in place. The west side may be another year or two. Go ahead, here's the next slide. Just, yeah, my background on Outlet Six on the east side. Part of that park contains the two stormwater ponds and Outlet Three on the western side of fifty-one. During the process, we conducted a public survey to start getting an idea on some of the programming and elements that residents of Stoughton and area would be interested in in these types of parks. Top items were restrooms, drinking ponds, shelters, site furnishings, benches, things like that. Play equipment, natural play type elements, so kind of a two-for-one trails and then landscaping. And then there's a variety of other items that fall into there as well. Along with this, kind of coming off of the questions that were coming in the court, but finding out what types of elements are members of Stoughton, of residents, I'm looking outside Stoughton Parks for different elements. Things that came up in there were dog park, disc golf, and outdoor pool, which for these two parks in particular, a neighborhood pool isn't something that, or a neighborhood park isn't a place for a large outdoor pool, even if that was something the city was budgeting. So that was something that was left off of discussions as we move forward. Other comments, things that came up frequently within some of the pieces, outdoor fitness stations, access to shade, accessibility to make sure that all users, no matter what age, are able to get around and use the parks, a train park, or larger playground, ice skating, hockey, and some other elements. We also met with some of the neighbors of the Outlet Six site to directly discuss the park. Some of their concerns and questions that came up were safety around the stormwater ponds, so looking at how to separate the end barrier though. Some of those are outside of the scope of our project. We still try to walk through what a typical stormwater pond and features would look like. Lack of barrier between houses and the park space, the trail users kind of lingering or accessing properties. So looking at some of those elements. But overall, the feedback was very positive on the designs of the park, and we left the residents with kudos for putting together the project and being able to involve them in the process. So Outlet Three, as it was probably about August last year, the red boundary is the approximate boundary of the park, and yellow is the proposed trail network that links through there. So the final master plan for the park itself, based on feedback from community, staff, and the committee, centers around shelter and restroom, half-court basketball, pickleball courts, so a multipurpose court that can be utilized for different purposes to minimize the amount of footprint, maintaining some open space for kind of multipurpose uses. What's shown on there is kind of a youth football-sized rec piece. So looking at the programming for the park, it isn't going to be the type of facility where you have large recreation program. It really is geared towards just neighborhood and surrounding area use. A large playground, picnic areas, and yard games, or some type of other outdoor piece. And one of the pieces that came up in the discussions with the committee was opportunities for parking and access to make sure that users, if there is a shelter or other events going on, have adequate and equitable access to the park. The main master plan shows an on-street stall, but we also included alternates for potential on-street perpendicular, parallel parking to expand, expand, enhance that access as the city moves to implement this plan in the future.
Any questions at this point? I guess I had one question, Dan. I don't know if it was brought up at the committee. So I assume that, you know, the on-street parking, there's really relatively minimal cost because the road is going to be constructed. We just have to stripe it.
Correct, yeah.
If it was, if we went with the alternate parking, I assume there would be additional costs, and where would that come from? Would that come from the impact fees? Or how would we potentially pay for that?
It would have to either come from the impact fees or be put in as part of capital improvements. The, I think the rationale behind leaving in as alternates was being able to reassess the need for parking closer to the time of development, knowing that this park is at least a year or two out from being developed, and housing stock and other residents in the area aren't there yet, so there may be a desire, so showing that there are some options. But I think the general consensus was that the amount of on-street parking is adequate for a typical neighborhood park. But you do have some options if that were to expand. But as you mentioned, it does come with an added cost as the road network and sidewalks in that area are in place.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions before we move on?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank Dan for including that visual of the parking alternates, especially the lower one with that kind of, I guess I'd call it a bump in for the ADA parallel parking option is, that's adjacent to the sidewalk there. That's a smart idea. That's my comment.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go on to the next one.
So this slide is just kind of character images of what some of those features could look like. Multi-use courts, the yard games that are built in, typically out of concrete and other durable features. And then probably larger shelter and then multi-use fields. And this image just kind of shows an oblique of what the park in a flat sense would start to look like in that area. A little hard to see without some of the other context in there and the other buildings, but so the connecting trails and access to playground and other features. We did do a public survey as part of this to get some feedback on the plan itself. The multi-use paths and open space were some of the most favorite things. Some people felt there was too much open space and only street parking, and that's somewhat where the discussion on the parking options came in. But also knowing that green spaces are a premium when you have development and that flexible spaces is part of the overall city parks offerings and plan. So Outlet Six is, contains two of the large storm basins for the Fifty-One West Development as well as trail connectivity to the learning property and future connections to the north and to the south will connect to the Virgin Lake Trail improvements, which are in the planning stages and will be going out for a bit later this winter. So this side of the park stayed, I'd say, much more passive use. There is a good bit of naturalized prairie and restoration area, more kind of contemplative and natural use. Walking around, strolling through the area, benches for viewing, a natural playground, so utilizing some of that, being able to pull in the prairie into the playground in a sense to create an educational space so that sign-in and other features to kind of teach kids and residents about what those areas are, how they're maintained, some of the history. If you look back to traditional cultural landscapes, how farms or even though John Grady, Americans would have utilized the spaces, all that could be integrated to some future signage and educational purposes within the site. Using a small, single occupancy restroom, similar to what's in the rugby park, and a small shelter just as kind of a respite area on the trail, creating a link of kind of trailheads throughout this section of the trail. We have Virgin Lake Park to the south. Not too far off is another place for larger picnicking and potential future community parks to help to the north. And I mentioned that multi-use path system is already in place, as well as the sidewalks and road system. So we, and the level of use of this site didn't necessitate or precipitate having any additional parking. There is, kind of looking back to, there's a small kind of area, additional buffer to some of those adjacent properties that are ongoing to be paid to restore a little bit of the vegetation that was lost as the development went in. So there's the character of that could look like natural playgrounds and mix of different features, similar to what's at Credle and other areas at the park, outdoor exercise stations, kind of like repair or trailhead type piece, and then one of the different ways you could do walking paths, whether they're just more grass, mulch, gravel, or other features. And again, just kind of fit what that will potentially look like on the site.
Any questions about that before we go too far into it? Alder Person Hunt?
The multi-use path kind of running off to the, I believe, northeast, shows the two bodies of water on the other side. Will they be actual open water, or they would be more like marshy wetlands?
The, so those are existing as part of the development. I believe the northern basin where the text is, is a wet basin, so there will be water. There is a southern basin, I don't remember off the top of my head, if that's an influx there, the detention basin or not.
I got one question.
But they would be planted with native plants, at least on the side slopes and exposed areas that are open water as part of the development and standard practice.
It seems like there was discussion about moving one of the features further away from that area.
They did, they moved the park, or the playground.
Yeah, yeah, so the playground was moved back a little bit more central to the park to give it a more of a buffer between, between that and the ponds themselves. Put a little bit closer to the road for access in as well, which just gives that, caregivers or parents or kids just an extra chance to catch somebody if they start wandering off towards those features.
And they'd actually have to cross the trail to do it as well, right?
Yeah.
And I think Alder Person Schumacher had a question.
The, similar to the park on the other side, the parking is intended as parallel parking along Nygaard and the street to the south. I don't know what the name of that one is, because I think we restricted parking on the access, the connecting street to fifty-one. Is that true?
Yeah, Greenbrier?
Yeah.
Yes. And I think, I think we'd want to encourage people to park, you know, on the, where the red dotted lines are, if they're on the road.
Nygaard and Dogwood, right?
Yeah, on that side of the street. So if we were going to restrict parking, I think it'd be on the opposite side.
Got it.
Part of that, I don't know what you typically do with that, Dan, if that's something we would determine ahead of time or see how it goes. I know Greenbrier, we already did the parking restrictions there because we knew that that was going to be more heavily traveled.
Yeah. Given the level of use proposed in this park, it's probably something that could wait. This really is meant as a neighborhood park. Ideally, most people will be able or interested in and walking to or using the trail network as a connectivity piece, but certainly making sure that there's at least some access for parking. There is, someone saying of an event up there for the family for the day and whatnot, but a couple stalls along. One of the two streets would be ideal. But as there's limited programming expected at this park, isn't as necessary.
Did that answer your question?
Good.
Anybody else? Okay, is this where we were?
Yeah, and I think that's the summary of the survey results from the initial concepts here. You can see the things that were left least with stormwater ponds and that access, and that was addressed. Comments from the committee and adjustment of that location. But the overall kind of program and type of amenities, most people felt was appropriate for the area, proximity to the adjacent neighbors, but also providing a different level of amenity from what's on the other side of fifty-one. We would be able to utilize the future trail network to connect to those if you wanted to go to the larger shelter and a more traditional playground.
Any questions or comments? I mean, the only thing I would add is we did have a conversation with the DOT last week, and they're doing a presentation, I think it's, I want to say Thursday night, from the Stoughton Port. from the Stoughton portion of the corridor project to McFarland. And we still, you know, have the plans in there to do the underpass, and that's in the design. So that would, you know, help connect these two parks. And it'd be located just north of Rutland Dunn Town Line Road, at the intersection there at Greenbrier. And that, that roundabout at Rutland Dunn would go in in 2026, at the same time as Highway B. And then the other thing we did learn at that meeting is the roundabout that they initially had anticipated to go in at Highway AB in 2026. They've moved that up to 2024. They took it out of the corridor project and put it in with their safety committee, much like they did with Robie, to move that up a couple of years. So we were pleased to hear that, so it's just a quick update on that portion. Alder Person Hunt?
Speaking of roundabouts, I've had a couple of people ask me about the intersection of Jackson and 51, where you cross over to Walmart and Aldi's.
Yes.
Is there possibly a roundabout in the future there?
We haven't heard of any possibility there. We've had some initial internal discussions on how we might change that intersection going forward. Now that the area is getting to be more developed out there, I think we have more options for, for, for the road that goes in front of the car dealers right there. But we would have to budget and have some engineering done to see how feasible that would be. So that might be something we could talk about when we go through the budget process here in 2023, if we think that that would be appropriate to do it then. Because really, for me, the main thing we'd want to leave that is to get in there. And there would be options as far as coming out, that I think we could possibly make a right in, right out there at some point, now that there's other ways to exit. If you were to go to the right, there's different options you could use to get back out to Highway 51 or even over to Highway 138 eventually. So, but we don't have a plan at this point. But certainly, it's a little bit awkward at that intersection. And it would be nice if we could do something long-term to, you know, to, you know, adjust that.
I think the general opinion I've heard is the other roundabouts are working so well that it makes that other now signal-controlled intersection seem kind of out of date and a little awkward.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly run that past the engineers when we do it. A lot of it has to do with land and grading. And, you know, we've been told that a minimal roundabout is typically a couple million dollars. So that's the other issue is, you know, how will we get paid for? But certainly, those are conversations that we can entertain.
May I add one more question on the parks presentation that I thought about? In the larger park area, the one area was designated for sports purposes. Will that be ones that would be in like rec department or the local leagues or something? I'm saying like soccer field-ish or something like that. Dan, do you know if there, is that what the vision for that space is? Or for more like pickup leagues kind of thing?
But I think it's used for program use, it would be, I mean, U-10 soccer or flag football league. The size of the space is smaller than a full-size soccer field.
Okay, that's kind of where I was going with it, but, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? And we do have a motion on the floor, so if there's no other questions, would, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks for being here, Dan.
Thanks for being here.
Both Dan's. R five, let's see. Next item is R five of 2023, and this one's coming from the Finance Committee.
All right, R zero five, 2023 is a resolution for the acceptance of TID number four audit for 2021 and TID number seven audit for 2020. So moved?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
These are just typically the audits that we would do for these tax incremental districts. We're a little bit delayed in them, but we're catching up.
All right, anything you want to highlight, Director Yelena?
No, not, not especially as Brett Schumacher had noted, we're a little bit behind on the TID number seven audit, but it's on the radar for both myself and Baker Tilly now. And so I don't anticipate problems with the subsequent TID audits being passed due.
Okay, questions for council members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one is coming from the Fireman's Pension Board. So this one here is.
I can run that one there.
You want to do that one? Perfect, thank you.
R zero six of 2023, not 20,000 and 20,300, anyway.
Yeah, there's an extra.
Yeah, extra two in there.
Get rid of the last two.
This is a very, very old. Long-term planning. Right, yeah. This is the resolution for the creation of an irrevocable fiduciary trust fund for firefighters' pension fund, so moved?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. I'm glad you took that because I cannot say that word.
Fiduciary?
No, irrevocable.
Irrevocable.
That, that one.
Got it.
The floor is yours.
All right, I'm going to go today with this one. I think it's just to come, go in with GASB compliance.
No, this one, well, yeah, GASB is involved somewhat. Currently, our firefighters' pension fund has a little bit less than a million dollars in it. And typically, what you see is that the monies for the trust funds are put into an irrevocable trust so that monies cannot be taken out, therefore trying to guarantee the monies remain there for the retirees for their pension benefits. As was mentioned, there is a somewhat of a GASB adjustment here because under the current actuarial standards and accounting standards, all the cash that we have available doesn't get counted when the actuarial liability for the pension is calculated. So there is a advantage to the City of Stoughton for doing it on the statement of net position, doesn't affect the fund balance in the general fund or anything. So I worked together with the, our CPA firm, our actuarial firm, and one other entity, I can't think of that off the top of my head. But they all gave me input as to what to do and, oh, I also worked with our attorney, city attorney on it. So we wanted to make sure that we're covering the bases for everything. So this is, assuming that the council adopts it, we will start the motion to investigate it, how we go forward. Any potential costs will be for legal and actuarial fees will be charged to the pension fund. It's not going to cost the general fund anything. The council gets another kick at the cat when we actually will have the resolutions to create the actual trust once all that legal language has been adopted. So I'll open up the floor to any questions that anybody might have.
I have a comment, not so much a question, but this is one document that seems to warrant a careful look. And I found a couple titles in the resolution itself. On page one, paragraph four, the word should be reached instead of reach. And on page two and line three, there is an and instead of and. And I just want to make sure that the resolution itself was complete.
Okay, we will certainly make those typographical corrections.
All right, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is coming from Finance as well.
Okay, we're rolling.
There it is. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R zero seven, 2023 is a resolution for the reduction in GIP Glacier Marine LLC letter of credit, so moved?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, we looked at this earlier tonight, and this is the property that we know as the Grosso Properties out in the Business Park North. We did a similar thing to it in April where we made a reduction to their line of credit. And this is just a furtherance of that based on their increased assessed value on their properties. They would reduce their line of credit by about $26,000.
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, next few items come from CACP. Our chairperson's not here, Lisa, can you introduce this one?
Sure.
I'll have you do these two and I'll let Ben do the last one, how's that sound?
Sure, so, ordinance O zero one dash 2023, amending city ordinance, chapter two, article two, division two, section two, dash six, seven, A of the Stoughton Municipal Code. And CACP recommended approval six, zero, on twelve, six, twenty-two.
First reading.
And this is first reading, thank you.
So, this one here was, we had conversations going back and forth about the situation that we inadvertently appointed a citizen member to be vice chair to the CACP, which that person's doing a fine job, we don't see an issue with that other than if the chairperson wasn't available for the budget CIP committee, we really wouldn't want to send a citizen member to represent the committee. So what this does is, it allows the citizen member to serve as the vice chair, but we would select an alternate, one of the other remaining council members from the committee to be, to replace the chairperson if they weren't available to be at the CIP committee.
And I think that appointment was to be made, the recommendation was that that appointment be made at the time that the vice chair was selected.
Yes.
So that it's not a wing it at the last minute. So we're prepared if someone, if that person needed to step in, we had a plan.
Yeah, so when the committee did their reorganizational meeting in April or May or whenever it is, and seated the chair and the vice chair, they would also do the alternate if the vice chair wasn't another council member. And you would be able to do that actually for any committee, right? The way we wrote it? It just happened to come up at CACP.
Anywhere, yeah, so if it's a committee that they can serve on, so obviously.
Right, any of the five. Is there any questions on that? And, you know, I was just kind of winging the language, so if somebody wants a wordsmith it, they could certainly send it to us and we could include it in when we do the second reading and take the vote at the next meeting. But I tried to at least capture it as succinctly and specifically as I could, so.
You did a fine job.
I'm always open for constructive criticism. Sometimes not constructive criticism, but mostly constructive.
Well, looks fine by me.
Okay, so this will be back at the next meeting. And then the next item is the park naming. So you can just make a motion for it, Lisa.
So I would make the motion to name the 51 West Park, Eggleson's Wood Park, Woods Park.
51 West Park East.
Yes, on the east side.
Yes.
Who's second?
The second by Alder Person Jensen, Alder Person Reeves.
So I'll probably end up turning this over to Alder Person Jensen because I think initially this was his recommendation. And part of it was, so most of, most of us in the community recognized this particular space as previously Eggleson's Woods. And so, you know, there was a suggestion by Alder Person Jensen and some family members as well, hoping to just sort of maintain that name partly out of familiarity. But I think Alder Person Jensen could also probably shed some light on just, you know, maybe some of their thoughts as well. But quite honestly, there weren't really any other names submitted that seemed to make sense. And one of the things that we noticed in the park naming policy is that, you know, one of the considerations can be the geographic location. And that really just made a lot of sense, given that, like I said, there weren't a lot of other names that really seemed fitting. And so if you had anything else to add, Alder Person Jensen.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, yeah, I think you covered it quite well. Yeah, it would be, it would be, I think it would be a good thing and appropriate thing to name this park for the Eggleson Wood, excuse me, name it Eggleson Wood Park. I'd like to drop the S on that, I think it'd be more grammatically correct. Walt Eggleson was my cousin, full disclosure, and he owned that land out there and they planned on building their dream house out there, he and Darlene did. And he died before that could happen. And it was then that Sphium took over the land and subdivided it and built houses that are out there now. So it would just be seemingly appropriate to name the park for Walt Eggleson, name it Eggleson Wood Park, or Eggleson Woods Park. He was a prominent figure in the city of Stoughton through the 50s. He was a veteran, World War II veteran, Purple Heart veteran. He was prominent with the Chamber of Commerce and bringing forward the modern-day Set in the Mai Festival. So it's, I think it's, like I said, totally appropriate, and I would really appreciate if, and I know the family would too, if it was voted to approve that name.
And I will also add that we had a lengthy discussion about naming after people because I think, you know, we want to be mindful, that we don't want to just have families rally for their cause and start naming after people and family members based on, you know, whatever. But I think, you know, given that's what it was called from a geographical standpoint, and like I said, quite frankly, there really just weren't any other submissions that were jumping out at us, so this just seemed appropriate. And we just couldn't really come up with a reason not to just continue sort of that name for that piece of property.
President Hirsch?
So is a park named Eggleson Woods Park or Egglesons, post free S, Woods Park?
Drop the S, I would appreciate that, I think it's more grammatically, grammatically.
Drop the S, I would appreciate that, I think it's more grammatically, grammatically correct to do that, if it was Eggleson Woods Park.
Eggleson Woods, okay.
Eggleson's Wood or Woods?
Woods, because it was Eggleson Woods, Eggleson Woods Park.
Oh, no S at the end of Eggle-
No, no S at the end of Eggleson.
No possessive of the woods.
No, no, don't.
Just trying to see what is-
I appreciate that clarification.
We could, we could ask Joyce to pipe in.
Yeah, Joyce, what is appropriate? Is it Eggleson's apostrophe S Woods Park or is it?
I think we should go back and look and see what it was actually called. I have always heard it as Eggleson's apostrophe S Woods. You know, the woods of the Egglesons. So, but I think maybe the family could enlighten us about that. I don't think I'm the person to do it.
The signage, the signage did not have apostrophe S, it was Eggleson Woods Park.
There you go.
Well, I didn't know that.
It was Eggleson Woods Park.
Yeah. And I did look up the apostrophe and I dropped it because they don't possess it.
Yeah.
So that's why I just put the S on it. And-
Good job, you researched everyone.
You know, but as I told Candy, I'm not the English major in the room, so I'm open to-
You do all right.
We do our best, but sometimes-
Like I say, English is my supposed first language.
Supposedly.
So what did we, where did we end up, Eggleson Woods Park? Yeah, okay, and if the family's good with that, so am I, so.
I think they'd be happy with anything.
Well, then, anything?
Anything Park.
The Wazoo Park?
I misstated.
All right.
I think there was a suggestion for Yahay Park on that.
Yahay.
Yeah. All right, so any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then the other park name, I'm going to turn this one over to Alder Person Haley.
Yeah, this is another proposal that came from within the committee. I had learned a while back that the, the names of the four lakes in this region were actually just kind of randomly selected. Chippewa or Chippewa words that were selected by the state government in eighteen fifty or so. So we reached, I reached out to Bill Krakenbush, the Ho'ochan Nation's Head of Heritage Preservation, to try to clarify what their name for Lake Ajansa had been. I had seen a couple similar variations to this out there. But the word that he gave me was Te Nausik. You can see there's a Ho'ochan pronunciation guide that you can find easily if you're curious. But it translates into Maple Tree Lake. And he said that they would be happy to have this phrase used for a park name. So I think this is a good, a good acknowledgement of the actual history of the region. The people who were in charge of this place before and who still live here. And this, this is going to be a pretty substantial park over in Kettle Park West. It's going to have some, some of the forest land preserved, which readily in fifty-one West, it really wasn't. So I think this would be a very appropriate name. So I will move to approve that name, Te Nausik Park for the Kettle Park West.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Anything else, Ben, you want to add? Or anybody else for that matter? I know there was good support to do this on the committee, so. All right, who's first? Alder Person Hunt?
Just to clarify, will it be called Te Nausik Park or just Te Nausik?
Te Nausik Park. Is my understanding, is that yours, Ben?
Yeah.
Anything else, Fred? President Hirsch?
No, I just wanted to thank Alder Person Haley and the CACP committee for actually reaching out to the Ho'ochan Nation and getting an appropriate name for one of our parks. I think it's very important to do so and thank you for acknowledging them as well.
Yeah, I give the impression Mr. Krakenbush is a very busy guy, so I'm glad that he was able to help us with the white work on this.
Will the, will the signage in that have translation and everything on there so that everyone understands what the origin of it is?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Typically, I think Directors Glenn and Abir kind of work together, so they have at least some consistency in the signage that they're trying to do. But we could certainly encourage them to do that because we do want people to understand the origin of the name. And I think that would be helpful. And I'm looking at Joyce, I know she's always got a project up her sleeve, but I know they're doing some wayfinding type things, there might be an opportunity there for that.
I think it'd just be a further acknowledgement of that, that we recognize the lands. To identify the tribal origin.
Saying that, that this land was originally occupied by the Ho'ochan Nation and we want to honor that and, you know, name the park after it, so.
Yeah, I think that would be important.
Okay, anybody else?
We have to get that translated.
Do plan to reach back out, let him know of this decision and probably introduce him to Dan or if anyone from the Parks Committee wants to be a representative in the planning process, that would be, just let me know.
I love it, at some point, if they would do, even if they could do a small dedication ceremony to the park as well. I think it'd be something in the future, maybe.
That'd be cool.
Sounds good, anything else? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion, and a second by Caravelo, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, thank you, have a good night.